Hello, good evening. Aloha mai kau kou. My name is Samantha Decore. I serve as the Chair of the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board, number thirty-six. And I call amai. I usually like to come early and greet you all. Thank you all with an aloha. And I was running a little behind schedule, so I call amai for that. But thank you very much for those that drove in, that are not residents on our side. And of course, residents, thank you very much for being here. Well, I'm calling this meeting into order. Today is Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are meeting in person at the Nanakuli Ma'ili, Nanakuli Public Library and virtually on WebEx. We do have a full agenda tonight, so to keep our items moving, I will go over some rules of speaking. If anyone wishes to speak, I will ask that in-person attendees line up at the microphone. That's to my left, your right. Those joining us on WebEx, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes. Officials' monthly reports under three minutes, and presenters under ten minutes. Sergeant-at-Arms will not be with us tonight, so I will go ahead and ask my secretary if she could keep time for us tonight. Okay, thank you very much. And please end your comments when you hear the timer go off. I will also ask you to conclude your comments. I would like to remind everyone that this is a community forum, so we welcome all comments, concerns, questions, and even opinions. Be free to share your mana'o on our agenda items and remember to treat others with respect and engage with the spirit of aloha. With that being said, before we get on to our first responders, we're gonna go ahead and open in pule. We wanna lift up some families that have been very instrumental in our community. Of course, the Kamo family are going through a time right now. We wanna go ahead and lift them up in prayer. Also, the Sova Ohano as well. And then our board members have recently had one of their family members go to be with the Lord very recently. So we wanna lift them up as well. So if we could all close your eyes and bow your heads. Father, we just come before you and we thank you, Lord, for this time that we can come together collectively, unified as a community, Father God, to advocate for the resources that we need, but also to partner in collaboration with each other on how we can be the answer. Father, we lift up these families, Lord, who have been pillars in our community and we just pray a blessing over their family, Father. Peace, peace to their households, Lords, to their extended families, and also that their labor of love for this community has not been in vain. It was a seed that has been sown and it will come to flourish. So we bless their families. Please bless this time, Lord Jesus, for everybody engaging in this community forum. Father God, allow us to speak, Lord, with listening ears and be slow to speak. We bless this time. Bless everyone that's with us in person and online. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Amen, very good, thank you very much. So we're doing something a little different tonight. I'm actually in an effort to continue to strengthen our board's connection with our community. I'm gonna actually have our board introduce themselves, share where in our moku they are from and also any positions or titles they hold on our board. So I will go ahead and start with our in-person. We'll go all the way to the left with the board member Hano Hano. And then I'll go ahead and call you out online for those that are with us online. Go ahead.
Hello, everybody, my name is Ed.
Use your microphone.
Hello, everybody, my name is Ed Hano Hano. I've been a community person here for as long as I've been living. I just wanna be a part of that. Thank you.
Aloha, my name is Malia Augustine. I am a resident of Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead on Nanakuli Avenue and a proud graduate of Nanakuli High and Intermediate School. I am the Chair for Education Committee and also the Chair for Land and Water Committee. Mahalo for joining us tonight.
Aloha mai, I introduced myself earlier. Samantha Decore, I'm the Chair of this board. And then I also reside in Ma'ili. So I'll go ahead and hand it over.
Aloha, my name is Jermaine Myers. I am a Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Lassie. I'm a board member. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Transportation Committee and the Housing and Zoning Committee. Thank you for joining us this evening.
My name is Paul Io. I live on Second Road, Lepeka Avenue, Nanakuli. I'm on the board, elected by you folks to be here. I'm on two committees, the Public Safety Committee Chair and the Education Vice Chair with Malia Augustine. Earlier, I had a petition going around saying, are you thinking of signing? But if that's on, in its regards to education and public safety, it's a petition that we talked about last night when we had the town hall meeting, which is the beginning of what we all need to do. That's it, thank you.
Very good. Next online, I'll have Board Member Corona introduce yourself, where you're from, the committees you hold. Over to Board Member Hano Hano.
Aloha, everyone. I apologize for not being there tonight. I'm in the mainland. I've been for a while now, taking care of some things and I should be back at the end of the month. But anyways, I am David Corona, a Ma'ili resident, longtime resident of Ma'ili. And I currently chair the Housing and Zoning Committee, Transportation Committee, and a member of the Land and Water Committee as well. Aloha and mahalo for allowing me to speak tonight, thank you.
Go ahead, Board Member Hano Hano.
Hi, aloha. I'm Naomi Hano Hano. Ed and I reside in Princess Kahano Estate. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board and I'm the Secretary in the Parks and Rec Committee. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. And not with us this evening is Board Member Mapuana Tector. She is a longtime resident of Nanakuli. She is the Board Sergeant-at-Arms. She also is the Chair for the Hawaiian Affairs Committee and also the Parks and Rec Committee. So she's at home, taking care of her family, and we wish her well. At this point, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, Honolulu Fire Department. If you could go up to the microphone and give your report, please.
Good evening. My name is Captain Gerald Checo. I'm the Third Watch Commander at Engine Company Twenty-eight on a cool fire station. I just wanted to share some compiled information from the past month. Statistically, we attended fourteen fires, six of them were brush, seven rubbish in one structure, eighty-seven medicals, and six vehicle collisions. As far as tips go, we wanna have everybody know that we want you to move over, basically. We ask you to drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move-over law, to help protect first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more than a public courtesy, it's a law. Hawaii revised statutes, twenty-nine-one C twenty-seven, requires a driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer or other official duties as indicated by the flashing red lights of the stopped emergency vehicle shall slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances, making lane changes if necessary to do so. They prefer two lanes if possible. And emergency vehicle means police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, and tow trucks. And they even include some state and county vehicles with working lights. As far as information, that's pretty much all. I would like to ask the board for some assistance, though. I've been here for eight, excuse me, for eight years now. Some of the first meetings I came to, we asked the Department of Transportation, they have safety devices called CATS, which is a warning system. I don't know if you guys are familiar, have seen us coming down Nanakuli Avenue, right there on Farrington. There used to be a flashing light and siren there. Nowadays, with cars, they're so awesome with the window up and the AC on. It's soundproof and you really can't hear us coming. So by the time we get there, either people are zipping by, don't see us, don't wanna stop, or emergency stop, and then that creates problems in itself. We're asking, and I'll be pushing on my side too, if we could have your support in mentioning this to the Department of Transportation. The CAT system on Farrington and Nanakuli Ave is not working. Also, there are what they call opticom systems on every traffic light along Farrington Highway. What that does is basically there is a signal sender on our truck. It sends a signal to the stoplight and it'll change the light in our favor. Usually, it'll be green and they want the traffic to flow through. This also isn't working. If I understand it properly, I'm not a hundred percent, but because of the age of somebody's stoplights, they're on various frequencies and our frequencies don't match up. So again, I'll be passing it through channels on my side. If I could have your folks' support mentioning it, that, I mean, this is straight up just for safety for us and giving us every advantage to get there as quickly as possible, but as safely as possible. So if I could ask for your support, please, thank you.
Absolutely. I do believe our Transportation Committee has, oh, and I see his hand raised. So go ahead, Board Member Corona, you can respond.
Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing that up and as you did, because we specifically addressed this with the DOT, our representative who has since retired. And so I'm coordinating with our new contact there. But we certainly brought that up. And one of the things that we brought up was those opticons along Farrington and specifically asking which ones, how many they have, how many they have, which ones are operating, which ones are not operating, and what's it gonna take to get them fixed. And the answer I got was essentially, and I don't have the numbers on my head right now, but the majority were working. There were some that were not working. And one specific question that we did ask was, and I specifically asked was, Nanakuli Avenue, when a call comes out and when you exit Nanakuli Avenue down towards Farrington, it's important that we had asked that we want them to have something put in place there to change the light to green. So when you're exiting Nanakuli Avenue, any of those inbound traffic coming in, because we know how it backs up, maybe when school gets out or something like that, you have to go on the opposite lane of traffic. So we know that and thank you for bringing it up. I'll bring it back up to the DOT spokesperson. We have to work with the city on this as well because the city is controlling the opticons, but the state funds the opticons. So it's a two-party system there. But thank you for bringing that up. And I'll make sure I follow up and I hope they have something for you by next month.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, our main concern, again, was because of the technology of the cars, yeah. The soundproofing is so awesome that the visual is what we're actually needing and that's the thing we're lacking. So if that can be done, that'd be great.
Very good, thank you. Board Member Corona, do you have a personal contact for HFD on communicating directly?
For HFD, no, just the DOT on the city and the state side.
So Captain, if you wouldn't mind giving us a direct contact that we can loop everybody in on the conversation just to make sure that we're all following through with the same pathways?
Um, yes.
You can go ahead and write that down if you'd like, or?
Okay, okay, I'll provide that after then. Thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you very much. But before you go off, we're gonna open it up for questions?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
For HFD, no, no problem. Board members, do you have any questions for HFD? Board members, community, any questions for HFD? Go ahead to the microphone online. If you have questions for HFD, you can raise your virtual hand.
This is Austin Salcedo. I just wanna make awareness. It's past Friday, it was about nine-thirty or so. Kaukama Road had a pedestrian accident. There were no ambulances on scene. They were, the victim on the ground with the the vehicle also there with the front windshield crashed in. It took about ten minutes to you guys get out there because it just happened. And I put a shout-out for applause for you folks being there as first responders and HPD as well. Five officers had responded to that as well, to, but come to mind. But thank you so very much. But so happened, this eighty-eight-year-old man had passed on and was sadly mis-said. I know the family. I didn't recognize him, but I recognized a son-in-law who came to the spot then. Yeah, we assessed the problem before you folks came, kept him stable, and we rendered aid. But had three women there, gentlemen was on the side, and my son and I, we just went and jumped into the situation, keeping stable, he was trying to get up. But we kept him stable enough. Where HPD came in and took this witness report that they were there to testify. And I noticed that we had five HPD responders. So I'm kinda concerned of what's happening in our area as well, too, because when we have five HPD responding to that, that means it eliminates other areas of the amount of HPD law enforcement. And I still, I'm gonna advocate for the state law enforcement to be also partnership with HPD per Act Two-seventy-eight, who brought it in. And I wanna explain further with HPD representative here in our community. But again, a shout-out of thank you and thank you for responding for our first responders. Appreciate that and thank you for the family that I know of. Thank you.
Okay, did you wanna respond to that? Go ahead.
Sorry for the loss. We were actually on duty that day coming off. We were actually picking up a firefighter from a hospital. So it was actually Makakilo Fire Station that came down. So the reason, as I say, that's why there was a ten-minute reason, ten-minute response time, where normally we'd be there in five, so. Yeah. Yes, no, I understand. I just wanted to give you an explanation why. Yeah, because normally, we're pretty, we're there pretty quick. But yeah, that's the reason for that, because we were out of quarters at the time at another emergency.
Mr. Kong from Alisi, thank you. Yeah, Checo and your crew. I don't know if this young lady is the first one in Nanakuli. Are you?
Sorry?
First woman, fire?
Uh, no, it's the first one in quite some time.
Okay, the first one is my cousin.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Aloha, Blessing Star, fellow crews. I wanna commend you and tell you thank you so much for putting your lights on the line for all the fresh fire people going on out there. And the second thing I wanted to bring up, HPD has those sirens that vibrate. Maybe I'm put a petition with the Neighborhood Board that maybe they can get funding to get new sirens that can kinda deter and get those windows rattling for you guys to come straight down. The second thing is I want a clarification because I tried to run it with HPD. Now, if community people here on this side, we do have a lot of game rooms, a lot of houses and whatnot, and we smell chemicals and stuff. As community member, do we call fire department? As what I've been directed from HPD to call you guys when we do smell those death labs and everything else? Or is there a process system to go through on that?
So as far as, first of all, yeah, this is our fighter, Wilhelm. She just joined us maybe three months ago. But yeah, this is the first female that's been down here in almost twenty years. Welcome her here, she's great, good stuff. As far as your question, the way the nine-one-one system works is you're gonna call for a specific reason. Now, if it, when you call, they ask you police, fire, ambulance, okay? So the two, ambulance and police are kinda obvious. And usually, everything else will fall towards us unless there's something that we can do as a joint response, yeah? So if you're gonna say, oh, I smell some sort of chemical or stuff like that, then they would dispatch us. So just call nine-one-one as you normally would, let them know the circumstance, and then from there, they'll work with you to have the proper agency respond.
Well, we don't wanna hold you up because apparently people are blowing fireworks outside. So it sounds like you have work to do. But I think that's all the questions that we have. I see none online. But can you please leave us your direct information so this way we can stay in communication with you about the sirens?
Certainly. One last thing, though. If you folks notice over time, overgrowth on the side of the road that becomes a concern, that's not being addressed, you can make it known and we can also kinda poke from our side as to these target areas that are concerns of overgrowth close to the roadside. The idea is, you know, so you don't get the accidental cigarette or whatever, ignite that and have it run up. So something along those lines where you want a setback from the road that's a concern, just pass it on to us.
Okay, very good, noted. Thank you so much. Thank you guys very much. Please be safe out there. Thank you for your great work. Okay, up next, we have Honolulu Police Department. I see Sergeant Fumi online, also Corporal Pagan. Go ahead, give your report. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, members of the community. Corporal Pagan, the Honolulu Police Department District Eight Community Policing Team. With me tonight is Lieutenant Carrera and Sergeant Moroka. I do have your stats for August. In August, we had thirty-two motor vehicle thefts, five in our area, seventeen burglaries, five in our area, a hundred thirty thefts, twenty-one in our area, forty-two unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, three in our area. There's a total of six thousand nine hundred thirty-five calls for service, one thousand one hundred nineteen in our area. The only thing I wanted to bring up was on Friday, the twentieth, at Kamakana Lee, we're gonna be doing an HPD recruitment event from six to nine, I believe, in the stage area in the middle of the mall. Anyone interested in partnering or joining HPD, please come down, get some information. We'd be happy to talk you through it and give you some information. Other than that, I'm open for any comments, concerns, or questions.
Okay, very good. Board member, any questions for HPD? Board member, Board Member Myers, and then, okay, go ahead, Board Member Marai.
Thank you, Chair. Corporal Pagan, aloha. First, I wanted to mahalo all of you at HPD for putting your lives on the line every day to protect my life, our lives. I consider it a privilege to call nine-one-one when my life is in danger. So I wanted to extend my mahalo from me and my family and our community. I'm seeking solutions. Since you're in our communities enforcing the laws, I'm seeking your feedback tonight if our lawmakers, state and city, need to add or amend our laws. Yesterday, I was asked by a community member at a party venue located in our District Forty-four on Lualulei Naval Road. I did some research. The venue is called West Side Ma'ka Pavilion. It's Ma'ka PVT landfill on Lualulei Naval Road. I have attended parties at that location in the past. They are a commercial party venue operating on an acre, eight-acre property-zoned residential agriculture. We have zoning laws for DPP to issue them a violation for operating a commercial venue on residential agricultural property. So I will notify DPP and the mayor's rep of this issue. So the problem. A commercial party venue is operating on a residential agriculture-zoned lands. A commercial party venue allows alcohol to be served, causing drunk drivers. Do we have strict laws now to shut down the business for operating without a liquor license and for operating a commercial business on a residential agricultural property? If the property owner fails to stop operating as a commercial party venue or pay the violation fines, does HPD have any authorization to issue citations to the owners to stop them from operating? How do we get the owners to comply with our laws? Mahalo.
Thank you for your question. Most of those issues are actually for the Department of Planning and Permitting. HPD does not get into property rights and who gets to do what and stuff in that property. It's actually more for the Department of Planning and Permitting. If they're on DHHL property, then DHHL can go after them for lease violations and stuff like that. You know, as far as we're concerned, it's private property and people that have events or something on their property have to follow the rules of where they're living. So again, that would be the Department of Planning and Permitting and not HPD.
Okay, so if somebody is stopped by HPD and they came from a party there and they had consumed liquor at the party, does HPD cite the owner of the property for having someone, you know, if they caused an accident, et cetera?
No. The responsible party would be the person driving the vehicle. Anything that goes, if there was somebody to go after a party, a host of a party such as that, it would be more of a civil matter regarding anyone that was hurt by someone that came from a venue such as that. But when we stop someone for driving under the influence or impaired driving, we don't trace back everywhere they went and go cite everybody that served an alcohol.
Go ahead, Board Member Io.
At the job fair that you folks are conducting, are there gonna be any openings for civilian personnel?
I believe our Human Resources Department's gonna be there. I'm not sure if they're gonna be. I'm sure, actually, I should say, I'm pretty sure that they do because every time we normally have a recruiting event, we also have our dispatchers that come out and they do recruiting as well. So I'm not sure how many other departments they're looking for. But I know they are looking at officers and most likely dispatchers as well as our police services officers, which are the ones, students from eighteen to twenty-one.
And the last question is, burglaries in our area that have occurred, any suspects? That's the last question.
That I don't have. I don't have the stats as far as if they've located anyone or not. I apologize.
Okay, very good. Board Member Augustine?
Hi, thank you. I actually have a response to Board Member Io's question, but it goes under HPD here. So Nanakuli Elementary School is hiring right now for a crossing guard for the students to cross before and after school safely. So there's three positions available for the community to get involved and participate. You can contact Sergeant John Ishikawa. And the positions are gonna be at Farrington Highway, Haleakala Avenue, Haleakala and Mano Avenue, and then Mano Avenue in front of the school. So this was due to a concern brought up by the community for the safety of the children at Nanakuli Elementary School. So if you're interested, please contact jishikawa@hanalulu.gov. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. Go ahead, community, and then I'll open it up after virtual.
This is Austin Salcedo. Sergeant Pagan, I got a question. Was there another shooting in Yani yet? I just seen briefly on the news that came on tonight.
I am not aware of one.
Yeah, I just seen him on the, just on the six o'clock news, I seen it. Anywho, question is, how, okay, after a cadet gets selected on HPD to be a HPD cadet for training and such, what is the turnaround time? How many months takes to make a graduate for in the cadet for HPD or new cadet?
The Police Academy is approximately six months long. Once they graduate from the academy, there is a field training officer program where they're actually on the road with a training officer, which is, which can be about three to four months long as well. So it'll probably be about a year before they're actually out in the districts on their own.
No, yeah, specifically for just a new cadet's coming aboard. Because, you know, I just, like, last night, nobody knew exactly what I was speaking about at the town hall meeting regarding State Legislative Act Two-seventy-eight. State Act Two-seventy-eight actually brought on board the session law for Hawaii. It uh, it takes away the Attorney General's, the Department of the Attorney General, and gives it to the the State Department of Law Enforcement. All that type of law enforcement goes from the Attorney General. The resources go to the state, uh, state law enforcement. It comes under Jared Lo. And this was made available by Senate Bill Thirteen Thirty-Seven of the year two thousand twenty-three. And I was the mayor, I was uh made aware that Cedric Gates had gotten the state law enforcement. And just gonna make it a, make it a shout out and make awareness. Cedric Gate is a House Representative. He's not a Senator. This arrived from the Senate Bill One Three Three Seven, Ron Koche. And it had passed it over to a House Bill HB Ten Thirty-nine under Scott's psyche. And the committees that it had gone under was judicial in Hawaiian affairs. Cedric Gates do not sit on this committee. I just want to make a collaborative truth of what happened in Senate, of how the making of Act uh Two Seventy-Eight. Cedric Gates, the House Representative, District Forty-Five Cedric Gate, did not gotten state law enforcement. It was under the Senate that passed over to the House of Representatives, Scott Seiki, and went throughout the board. So the the gotten is not a true statement by our District Forty-Five. I just want to make a, make a statement, make people aware of it, because transparency to the, to our area is very important. Correct information is important to our area. We know who is working for us and who is not. Okay, but I will advocate for the the uh the implementation and execution of Act Two Seventy-Eight and what this is all about. Because we need an MOA. Simply, we need an MOA to have this thing for the HPD and state law enforcement to be put together for our State Senate District Twenty-two. I'm not talking about any other districts, just our area because of the bad behaviors that's in our area itself, too much. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Kate, go ahead, up to the microphone.
Aloha, besting star, Dela Cruz. Um, mahalo for all your hard work and putting your life on the line for us and our community. I just want to do follow-up on a couple of things. A couple of months ago, I had a question with um regards to the sweeps, in regards to Department of Health. If you guys followed up and got back anything, any reports on the sand fleas, reports that are out there regarding the sand fleas? And also, the other issue was the sirens, have it gotten fixed? Uh, for the emergency sirens, I haven't heard anything. Um, and also for all the sweeps that's being done, is it connected with all the burglaries that's been happening around this area? In that regards, um, the suspects and whatnot, are they connected to the ones where when they're swept, they don't have their items and everything, so are being forced into our homes that are, were being robbed? Or something like that? I'm just trying to follow up on that. Mahalo.
Um, yeah, so the first question regarding the um, the Department of Health, um, that would be something that uh the city or the parks could call and request. Well, HPD doesn't um necessarily go out there unless we see some type of illegal chemical dumping and stuff like that. Um, in regards to the sweeps, uh, HPD in the city does not do homeless sweeps. We actually do uh park enforcements, park uh park rules violations, as well as um uh beach cleanups. Um, whether um our homeless people are actually going to other homes after that's right, after we do our cleanups, um, that I am unaware of. Um, I I would assume they're getting their items from somewhere. Um, but to be honest, we we, it's not like we've seen an influx when, if we do one area, there's an influx of things stolen from that housing area. Um, so unless people are not reporting it, um, there there's really no data that shows that um this is what's happening. Um, was that your question? Did I miss a question?
Sorry, say that again.
Uh, did I miss, did I miss anything? Yeah, the sand fleas in Department of Health, the
Sirens, the sirens, the emergency
Yeah, the sirens is actually um the city and the state get disaster prepared. That has nothing to do with the Honolulu Police Department. Um, so you might want to direct that to the mayor's rep.
Yeah, we can ask our governors or PS an update for us. Sirens, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Kong. Uh, I had some bad news last night from Corporal. He has to come and pick up his sign. He left it out there so long that they go fast on my road. So everybody's asking for bumps. So I'm just gonna start putting my bumps back up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, one more in person and then uh Johnny May, I'm gonna get to you. I see your hand raised, so go ahead and state your name.
You know, um, I just want to put it out there, Corporal Pagan, um, SR thirty is very important. And we as the community really need to lend our boards know how important. Because it's having the state law enforcement and the city to work together. It's not who has more power. It's working together to protect us from unethical bad behaviors. So be the voice, be the solution. You see something, say something. I know it's not easy. But if we don't say something or do anything or push for the SR thirty within our committee, we're just as bad as them on Honolulu. So the SR thirty needs to be implemented. And this is very important because it's your life, our kids' life, our children's life. We live in our generation right now. Who's gonna be there for the next generation, the children, to fight for them? Our parents left a fight for us, and we're here fighting. They never finished the fight, so now we need to continue to protect the young ones. They're the generation. They're gonna be in the back of us to fight after we're gone. But you have to share your mana'o with them. Along with the mana'o is heal within, so you can share with the aloha. That's all I have to say.
Okay, last question in person and then we're gonna go online.
Just to let everybody know what SR thirty is, is basically state operation of group living facilities, drug treatment centers that's bringing upon by the state into our area that never came before the neighborhood board. So we made a letter, I'll explain further in the community discussion, how important this is. Because the neighborhood board doesn't know about this. The state somehow brought it in. That's what they did. It's here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Johnny May, thank you for your patience. Please go ahead and mute yourself and ask your question to HPD.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm sorry I missed last night's meeting, but was it, did I hear correctly that I, I think they were giving District Eight hundred thirty-something officers and we're gonna get thirty-six officers? I don't know when it's gonna begin and when it's gonna end. Is that sums up last night's meeting?
Um, I believe what the chief said was that um, I think the hundred thirty was what they're saying, or we're short in our area. Um, the thirty-seven, I believe, was uh what they are saying, that they're trying to get other divisions and other law enforcement officers in the area to uh assist with saturation-type patrols and and visibility and stuff like that. So that would be um like our traffic divisions, um, I believe, working with uh DLE, the Department of Law Enforcement, as well as other law enforcement agencies to get them in the district and stuff like that. And I believe he said that what they're gonna be doing is they're gonna be um assessing every two weeks or so to see um whether it's uh working, uh whether it's still needed in that area. Because again, like the chief said last night, um, you know, HPD is responsible for the entire island. So taking people out of one area, we don't want to start moving the problem elsewhere. So we're trying to move everywhere, move people so that we can kind of evenly spread everybody out and and every area is kind of controlled somewhat. So uh, we wish we could have that kind of bodies permanently, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
Do you know when it's gonna start and when it's gonna end?
Uh, I believe they started um a couple of weeks ago with the Department of Law Enforcement being in the area. So um, again, I'm not sure when it's gonna end. We try not to tell people when that's gonna happen. Um, again, like I said, they're gonna be assessing it to see uh what the need is and whether needs to be increased or we can slowly decrease it.
It was very um disheartening to hear that um, I mean, which is a good part, that one officer will be stationed at Waiana High School and one stationed at Nanakuli High School. You know, the school should be a safe place for kids, and I I don't know what's going on in today's society. But it's just so unfortunate even the school is not a safe place. Thank you for everything that you all do.
Thank you. Thank you, Johnny May. Uh, HPD, I think that's it for uh for your folks portion. Thank you. But please thank Chief Logan, uh Major Beckley, Sergeant Fumi, you know, Corporal Pagan. Thank you guys so much for coming out last night. It was a very productive, uh, we're very hopeful. Um, so we're looking forward to the enhanced enforcement and thank you guys for your extra time and please be safe out there.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Moving forward, um, to filling the vacancy, we have a vacancy. Board Member Kainoa uh um has resigned from our board. We want to really thank her and mahalo her for, you know, just uh investing the time in community. She's been a very pivotal part in our committee meetings and also here at our board. She always brought a very positive energy and she was always very effective, so we mahalo her and thank her for her time. Uh, so right now, I'm gonna open it up to board members. If there are any nominations to fill the vacancy, uh, I'll start over here to um my left. Board Member Hana Hano? Okay, go ahead. Anybody have any vacancy um nominations? Okay, go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Chair, I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Dixon.
Very good, Elizabeth Dixon. Okay, very good. Uh, Board Member Corona, I see your hand up online. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Gary Shinzato.
Okay. Gary Shinzato, uh, any other nominations from the board? Uh, we do also open this up for volunteers. Uh, if you would like to volunteer to fill the vac- oh, go ahead, Board Member IO.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Mark Kong, that's in the back there. Guide the gentleman.
So, say that again, say that again.
Mark Kong, K-O-N-G, resident.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, community, do you have uh, uh, does anybody want to volunteer to fill the vacancy? Okay, go ahead. Your name? James Cowles, okay. Very good. All right, uh, we have four four nominations, yeah, four nominations. So I'm gonna give it over to Jeffrey. He's gonna go ahead and do the roll call.
So, so what we'll do is um, for, we'll give each that's been nominated a minute to um, go to the microphone, introduce themselves, express their wanting to be on the board, and then we'll do a roll call following that little brief introduction. So if those nominated in person could please go to the microphone um for a brief minute and we'll continue from there.
Thank you. And then we're gonna have the uh timekeeper keep the time on the minute. Thank you very much.
Good evening, board. My name is Elizabeth Dixon. Um, I'm happy that Jermaine Myers, board member, nominated me. I have been on the board previously with Jermaine Myers and a few other people, including James Cowles at one time. Um, I am a longtime resident of Nanakuli. I wasn't born here, but this is my home. My family has lived on Aoyang since nineteen seventy-nine. And the way things are going now, I am happy to come back and fill the vacancy if possible. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, if you're in the room, please uh line up to the microphone so we can keep the items moving. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Garchin Sato. I'm a lifelong member of the Westside community. I was born and raised in Makaha, where my mom is currently living. But I currently live with my wife on their family's homestead in Maile. I'm a electrical engineer by profession. Um, I have experience in design, build, uh, project management, project engineering. Uh, during my career, I noticed that uh I did a lot of projects outside of my community and I helped them to be more efficient in other communities, and that's why I'm here tonight. I want to give back to my home community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, yep, please, um, please, James, if you could line up to the microphone as well. Go ahead.
I'm a resident of Nanakuli for the longest. I'm a professor, I'm an engineer, I'm all of them. I don't have no certificates, but one thing I can say, I don't know what drives me here. I just to be on point with everything, especially with the homestead, the problems we have been, the problems we've been having. This last week, I said, I don't want to even talk about it. Last night's meeting was a good one. Leave everything in the back and let's go forward. So many things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Aloha. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is James Cowles. I've been on this board recent, uh, for three years before. Um, I've been on a few projects off this side. One of, one of the biggest projects was Fifth Lane out here on Farrington Highway. Another project was we moved some of the bus stops out of the middle of the road and eliminated some of the bus stops for the Kupuna safety. Because at that time, we were getting a lot of blistering fatalities with Kupuna because they're just darting across the road where the bus stop is at. So we were instrumental in moving the bus stops to some of the stoplights so they can utilize the stoplights. And I was also involved in the access road, emergency access road, which is still pending. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now what we'll do, I'll go down and make a, do the roll call vote. So for this, when I call your name in your microphone, please say the last name of the individual you would like to be nominated to fill the vacancy. Um, that individual has to receive the quorum vote, which is five. Uh, if we go through and um, we don't find somebody to fill that vacancy, we'll go through a second time. And if necessary, if there were a lot, we could do a third time, and if we cannot, we'll advertise the seat next, at next month's meeting. So I'll go down the list that I have again. The last names are Kong, Cowles, Dixon, and Shinzato. Member IO?
Kong.
Board Member Augustine?
Kong.
Chair of Court?
Kong.
Board Member Myers?
Dixon.
Board Member Corona, are you still online?
Yes, Shinzato.
Board Member Ed Hana Hano?
Kong.
And Board Member Naomi Hana Hano?
Cowle.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Cowle.
Gotcha. So after that first roll call vote, um, hmm, yes. Um, so after that first roll call vote, um, the vote count is Kong, one for Dixon, one for Shinzato, and one for Cowles. We'll do the roll call one more time. Again, the person has to receive a quorum vote, which is five. And again, please, board members in your microphones, Board Member IO?
Kong.
Board Member Augustine?
Kong.
Chair of Court?
Kong.
Board Member Myers?
Dixon.
Board Member Corona?
Shinzato.
Board Member Ed Hana Hano?
Kong.
And Board Member Naomi Hana Hano?
Cowle.
Cowle.
So after that second roll call, the vote count remains the same. Okay, so since we weren't able to find somebody with the quorum vote with those two roll call, we will advertise the seats next month. For those that have volunteered and have been nominated, you're more than welcome to come back next month and volunteer for the position again, and we can go about the roll call process the same next month as well. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you for those that have nominated uh members. Okay, very good. Thank you for those that have nominated members and also those who volunteered. We do want to encourage you to please come back again next month if you would like to participate in filling the vacancy. So thank you all very much. Moving on to community concerns. If community in the room, you have concerns, we're going to have you line up to the microphone. To my left, to your right, also online, if you do have any community concerns, please raise your virtual-- Then we'll go ahead over to you virtually. So go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is James Cowles. I live in Maiili, right up the road from Maiili Elementary School. My biggest concern for that area is the traffic. The road is narrow. There's a lot of kids walking up and down the side of that street to go to school or from school. You have everybody speeding down the road. We have big signs outside, "Slow down." Nobody knows how to read. Even the bus drivers. I yelled at one of the bus drivers because they were speeding down the road. They opened the door and they stick finger at me. But what I would like to see is speed humps put on that road by Maiili Elementary School on St. John's Road. That will slow down the traffic, and I'm surprised there hasn't been any kids that got hit yet. And that road is not wide enough for two cars, and they walk right on the road and the cars just fly past them without regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Hello, I'm Austin Sosero. I'll just bring it to attention because I brought it to the attention of our appointed Senator Cross Grab on the 2nd of September and confirmed that he received my email regarding Senate Resolution 30 that was made this year. And I take it back, 2023, so long it has not been implemented and executed. Reason for it's safety. For the area of our concern, my concern is all ours, the biggest group of operations on the Senate District 22 is schools, state operations, and all our DLNR mountains that's in back of us is owned by state. And also, the high wall is owned by state DLNR as well. Okay, this is all state operation, but another part of the state that this SR 30 that's focusing on is our children's schools, LDD residents, children recreational areas, state operations of group living facilities that's made. It's made by the State Jail Diverging Program Housing, State Court Conditional Release Housing, and the Department of Health, Adult Mental Health Division. All these have not become came before the Neighborhood Board by the means of the City DPP Conditional Use Permits. Every time something goes on on the residential area, our City DPP always getting hit, nailed, questioned, accused of and not doing anything. But when the state operates a business in our area, we're not coming before the Neighborhood Board. That's heaven. It has to be for a community input study, the impact study. That's where we come in and our Neighborhood Board to officiate all this. So SR 30, I wrote a letter to the mayor because our appointed senator right now is useless to me. That means this is safety matters. He's useless to the community that Senator Governor Josh Green had appointed. So I wrote it up to the mayor.
I'm going to have you summarize.
Yeah. So basically, I'll be going to the commissioners tomorrow, HPD Commissioners, and I'll be advocating for them to adopt as well to, for the SR 30, but it still has to be questioned to the mayor's. I'll bring it up to the mayor's rep and our governor's rep. Our governor rep is available tonight?
Yeah, he's online with us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. Go ahead to the microphone, state your name for the minutes.
Aloha, Kako. I am Ke'ara Kilaklua Agiar. I am 16 years old at Nanakuli High School and Intermediate, and I wanted to talk about what I wanted to add what Uncle with the hat said with the crosswalks and stuff. We don't have JPO, so we don't have people helping out with the crosswalks. And I think that keikis, young keikis, don't know how to use the crosswalk because they're so young. Like, I see little kids walking to school and without their parents and stuff, and I think it would be good to have JPO back again because we used to have it in the elementary, but then it stopped. I don't know why, but it stopped. Nobody does it anymore. I think it would cure a lot of traffic and it would help the keikis and it would help a lot of car accidents and, you know, keep more keiki safe. And I think if we had JPO again for in a lot of districts, like even over here, because a lot of kids over here, they come back and forth with going to the shopping center and going to their school and having to meet up with their parents and stuff, even on a-- I think it would be a great system for the keiki, and I think it would stop a lot of traffic because it would like help all the kids go and they don't have to wait at the crosswalk. And I also think there are a lot of chronic out there, so they're in jeopardy of that, too.
Very good. Thank you very much. Noted. Thank you very much. Yes. Awesome. Very good. Very good. Okay, doesn't look like community in the room has any other concerns. I did see a hand up online, but maybe it was taken down. So, oh, there you are, Board Member Corona. I'm sorry, was that you? Go ahead.
Yeah, that was me. That's okay. Thank you. This is for community concerns for the, my own personal as well, for the, our governor's representative and city representative. And this goes back to what Mr. Cowles talked about, and I've been working with, I had worked with George Upseti, I think. I say his name incorrectly, Upseti, Upsee. I forget how to say his last name, but of the state, and we worked well together. We did a lot of good work and did some, and got, and working with the city Council Mayor's Police Office to get some traffic mitigation measures implemented on Kualapuni Street. And what Mr. Cowles talking about is the main entrance of Maiili Elementary School back on the private road of Kalkumana Road back there. And that is the main entrance for the DOE to enter for parent pickup and drop off of vehicular traffic on that road, yet there's no traffic mitigation measure on that primary road for that school. So I would like the governor's representative and city representative to get the proper point of contacts back out to me again. I have my contacts, but I would like them to reach out to me directly. And if you could give them my, you have my email addresses, so I can add this to our transportation agenda and see if we can continue to improve the traffic there and also talk about the other mitigation measures for the other schools in our district area. So thank you very much.
Okay, very good. We're going to go ahead and--
First one. David, if you don't mind, I'd be interested in helping you out in this situation, if you can get in touch with me or whatever, get in touch with Samantha. She knows how to get ahold of me. I'd be really interested in getting involved in that one.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, Board Member.
And this is a concern at the Education Committee for the Nanakuli High and Intermediate School graduation commencement. A request has been made to return the lay ceremony to the football field as of the reconstruction of the football field. It was moved to the softball field in the middle of the school. And so a request has been made to return the lay giving ceremony straight from commencement to return to the football field. So I have a survey here, a petition here if you folks would like to support that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Johnny May, I see you online with your hand raised. Go ahead and unmute yourself, ask your, share your community concern.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. I don't know if anybody knows, but it seems that we have a huge abundance of nonprofit organization in our community. And I, most of it, I believe, addresses social issue. The next thing I just also want to make a comment, it's a quote. It says, "Giving up freedom for security." I just think about if you're in that situation, what you've given up. I think this is a time that we need to pivot our community in a better direction. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. One more online. Lianna, if you could unmute yourself and ask your, share your community concern.
Hello, I have two actually. So one of them, I just wanted to, I should go to the Education Committee meeting, but I wanted to see if anybody can find out about Nanakuli High School and accreditation, only because I've been, I've been hearing a lot about how Nanakuli High School is not an accredited school. And it's kind of concerning because it affects our children, our school. I heard like places like-- Took Nanakuli High School off their list of, you know, when they donate to the school or they give to the school. So, you know, someone told me like when they went shopping, Nanakuli High School is not on the list to be able to donate to them. And then when they talked to the manager, they say it's because they're not an accredited school. So, you know, I've been hearing that a lot lately, and I'm concerned about that because I'm sure everybody is, but I want to know like details, like how long haven't they been an accredited school? How can we as a community help the school be accredited? That kind of stuff. If we can find out information on that, that would be great. Another concern I overheard from somebody that told me, which I'm not even sure if it's true, but I live on Poa Av, and we, our families on this street fought to keep the gate closed over here. And we, you know, we were promised that, and then we were promised a lot of stuff, but eventually the gate was open, you know. So we're, you know, just living it. But I heard too that now they want to make it where we only can park on one side of the road. And I'm like, see, that's why we never let it be open. And so now we get all these rules that may be coming up, and that's concerning for me. Like, we get, you know, now we get stipulations put on us because the gate is open. So just wanted to see if anybody can figure out about these things and get back. Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you. Until, Lianna, I will contact the Department of Education to get some answers for Nanakuli High School. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Moving on now to officials' monthly reports. First up is Governor Josh Green. Hold on one second. Yeah. Gary? Gary, are you online?
Can you hear me?
Thank you very much. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I don't have anything to report from the last month because there were no questions, but I have been taking notes about this month's concerns. So just to let you know about, one of the concerns was the sirens. So I just looked at the map, and there are two sirens that are inoperable on the west side. One is between Waynai and Makaha. It's 08323. And the other one is 08317, which is near Princess Kahanu and Farrington Highway. So I did give an update for that one last month where it would, it was in contracting and procurement. So, you know, we're hoping that they can get all that settled. The part has been ordered. So if anybody's curious about the sirens, you can check online on the Haima website, all the sirens statewide, they show the status of the sirens and, you know, whether they're operable, inoperable, or where they are in terms of repair.
Very good. Thank you. I know you mentioned this last month, but, oh, I apologize, Gary. Were you done?
No, if you want to discuss the sirens, I was just going to say, I didn't know anything about the sand fleas, but I'll look into the sand fleas for DOH. But go ahead, you had a question?
Very good. Last month, I think you gave us a deadline on when those sirens were going to be completed. Did you or, and if you did, could you repeat that?
I don't have a deadline. I think it all depends on the procurement process. So I do know that they are in the middle of that. So let me try to find out exactly how much longer they think it will take to get to that. So there are, if you look on the actual website for Haima, there's quite a few across Justoahu that are inoperable, including several in town and several on the east side, up on the north shore. So I'm sure that they're all in red, which means that they're all in procurement and contract. But I'll try to find out specifically to the Nanakuli sirens.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up to the board for questions for governor's rep, questions for, go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Gary. I have submitted by email a UIPA request to John Mizuno, and I copied the governor and the chief of staff. I'm asking you if you could follow up on it. I have not heard back from him as far as acknowledgement that he received it or any calls since I had stopped by his office at the state Capitol on August 15th. There was no response at all. So if you can follow up on that and get a report back to us next month, please.
Yeah, absolutely. And there are timelines within the UIPA, so I think it's 10 business days to give you a response as to the status of the request and then an additional 10 days if there's some issues with responding with the virtual documents and such. So I'll find out what the status is of, status of that is.
Thank you. It's Jermaine Myers, UIPA request to John Mizuno. Mahalo.
Oh, just may I ask what the subject was for the UIPA request?
Yes, the subject was requesting for records regarding the hired SOSH members with lived experiences.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Board Member Agustin?
Hi, Gary. Thank you for taking our concerns. So this comes from the Education Committee where we would like to ask if the governor's office can release the capital improvement funding that was allocated to the schools in our district. It's been in process through legislation, and we're just waiting for the funds to get released so that the schools can receive the restoration that, the projects that they've submitted, specifically Nanaika Pono Elementary School and their playground that had been burnt down. And also, just for general improvement, I believe the Nanakuli High and Intermediate School Performing Arts Center as well. So we'd like to begin with these projects and start improving our schools as soon as possible once those funds are released. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I got that. Thank you. I don't know if the reps or the senator's office may have some updates, too, because they, it seems like they're always keeping track of those simultaneously. I will always, I will also look into it.
Great. Thank you very much. One moment, Board Member Hanano, you have your hand raised. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, Gary. Just to let you know, I do live in Princess Kahanu and Anwaiolu, no, sorry, Anwaiiku Street in the front part of Princess Kahanu. So I did hear the sirens this month, so I'm not sure what sirens I heard, but, you know, we can hear the sirens, or at least I can from my house, just letting you know.
Okay, yeah, there are two sirens adjacent to those. One is by Nanakuli Beach Park, and which seems quite a ways away. And the other one is by Maiipalau, Lawa Beach Park, I think, near Kalkumana Road and Farrington Highway. There's another one there.
Yeah, just let, just wanted to let you know, I did hear a siren first business day of the month.
Yeah, thank you. But yeah, well, we don't want to take any chances. Well, I will try to follow up and find out what-- Yeah, thank you. But yeah, well, we don't want to take any chances. Well, I will try to follow up and, and find out what the status is after one minute. Thank you though.
Great. Thank you very much. We're gonna open it up to community now for questions. Go ahead.
Aloha, Gary. This is Austin Salcedo. Tonight, after tonight, I will get your email and Erwin Coatas, because I, I want to need you folks to collaborate. This is uh, I'm continuing collaborating and advocating for Senate Resolution 30. Because the danger to our children's schools that's operated by the state operations. Again, State Department of Health, state jail diversion housing, again, state court conditional release housing, and also kahalas is being built in our Senate District 22. The reason for it, these schools and this group living housing is within one dash half mile apart. Is within that. And all this group living housing is within 1,000 feet apart. That's a ruling by the state. You know, it was a ruling by the Attorney General, Deputy Attorney General of 2022. But I'll, this uh, letter to the mayor, this email that I sent out last week, I haven't got a response yet. It's going to be forwarded to uh, Representative Erwin Coata and be given it to you at, at the end of the night. Okay, so just making aware of this. This is a safety, safety net. And awareness of all these operations happening on the Senate District 22 that's an unsafe measure. And there's no measurement that was presented to the neighborhood board of the amount that's in our Senate District 22. We have no idea because it's state operated. It's not city. They don't have no conditional use permits. Okay? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. Uh, state your name for the minutes, please.
Kalaisa Salcedo. Aloha, Governor's Rep, Gary. My thing is I want you to deliver a message to the governor. Stop the kahali because he cannot stop the crimes here. So why would you want to build more kahalas within a district? That crime cannot be controlled, unethical behaviors on our beach, on our roads, in our schools cannot be controlled. So you want to do the community a favor. You stop the kahali until you control everything that run by the state, from D L. Leonard, mountain, unethical hunters on the road, drug addictions on our beaches. Before you think of any of a kahali, you think of the community. Here, the 96792 is from Kai Point to Kahina Point. It's not about making money. It's about finding solution. That is the solution. A ole, no more kahalas until you can control the problem. Don't expect the committee, as the mayor said, what you and your committee will do. They're doing their best. We are doing our best. What are you folks gonna do as the governor? We're not puppets. You got your puppets. The community is not puppets. We're human beings. We have our constitutional rights while being safety. Get the job done, but do not bring any more problems into our community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Uh, going online to Johnny May, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Gary, you know, when Governor Lingo was governor, she built affordable housing for the house, um, the unsheltered residents. And recently, the state sold one of the units, Kahikolu. Um, so the state brings in all these supposedly good ideas. But you know, is the people in Waianae refuse to utilize it and what happens outside, people come and utilize it. Um, I just feel that the kahali project is being forced on our throats. Um, it's a Band-Aid remedy. Um, and the next thing, Kuhyupak Terrace, that was under public housing. So once they renovated it, it was sold by the city. So what's going to happen to Mayor Rights and Kahumanu Housing, which is currently public housing, once it's redeveloped? Uh, I think it will be sold. So what the government is doing is taking out um, public housing from the inventory and creating more homeless. That's not a good idea. Do you think that's a good idea?
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you very much. We're gonna go over to Dana. Um, if you could unmute yourself and ask your question.
This isn't a question. It's a comment to the two last speakers that spoke. Um, Auntie Johnny May and Ms. Salcedo in terms of kahali. I, I just want to suggest that understanding of kahali and its present understanding might be the problem. If we go back to traditional routes, kahali could provide a safety mechanism that really assists the community in rebuilding itself in a positive manner. So you know, the understanding of kahali as a homeless shelter is a problem. Auntie Johnny May, when we talk about the issues of people not going into these shelters and other people coming into our community, you guys want to follow the United States Constitution, which allows people to, to come into your community, to immigrate, to gentrify the community. So you have to be careful about what you're asking for in terms of you want to be discriminatory to those people who don't have money? Or do we want to be able to aloha everybody and introduce them to the culture of Waianae, which is a very positive culture? That's my, my comment.
Thank you very much, Dana. Uh, I'm gonna ask uh, that any comments be directed towards the governor's rep or myself. But thank you very much for sharing. Um, I think that's it for all the questions that we have online uh, for Governor's Rep. Uh, Gary, please, if you would be able to get back to us with regards to Board Member Myers' questions and any other concerns that we had. Uh, go ahead. Last question. Sorry, Gary. Hold that thought. One more question for Governor's Rep and we're gonna move on.
Hello, Gary. This is Bessin Star Kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands. I just want you to um, let the governor know that I took notes on your um, comments and everyone's and the community's recommendations and taking in consideration for the HUD Section 8 and the federal fundings. And also in regards, I'm wholly highlighting up on the kahalas that all the community are um, everyone is barking about, I should say. Um, but I will conduct my report and my decisions and so forth and go forward on that. And I'll just bring it up to the level with the governor as well as the mayor. Mahalo.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, awesome. That's what we have so far uh, for Governor's Rep. Uh, thank you, Gary, very much for joining us. We're gonna go ahead and move on to Mayor's Rep, Erwin Coata. Go ahead. Thank you, Erwin.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, everyone in the community uh, here in person as well as online. Erwin Coato with Border Water Supply Service, the mayor's representative. Uh, for this month's Mayor's September Newsletter, there are a number of articles, the highlights for this month's uh, newsletter. A city takes action to address crime along the Waianae Coast. There were 30 brand new security cameras installed in Chinatown. And the mayor hosted a healing vigil on the anniversary of the Maui wildfires. Uh, last month, there were two questions that were posed. The first one had to do with if there was any satellite city hall services serving the uh, Waianae Coast. Uh, the answer is yes. It's located at 85670 Farrington Highway. It is fully operational. It does provide services to things like motor vehicle registration, bicycle, moped. Uh, you can also get a holo card and pay a water bill there. Um, and the second last question had to do with whether they need more parks at the Waianae Coast. This question has come up in the past. Um, DPR, Department of Parks and Recreation, currently has no plans to add any city parks along the Waianae Coast. However, they are budgeting monies for Pooohulu Community Park, updating that site to improvements such as a swimming pool, park lighting, and field and irrigation improvements. And that concludes my report. All right. Happy to take any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Board Members, any questions for Mayor's Rep? Board Members, Board Member online? Go ahead. Board Member Hano Hano.
Hi, Erwin.
Hello.
I, you know, at our Parks Committee uh, meeting, a resident came in and said that the uh, baseball field at Kalani Ana Ole Park is in a really, really poor condition. So um, I did go there a few days later. I have a few photos. I'll go ahead and send to you. It's really bad. It's not even a diamond. It's just looks like a pile of dirt up there. You know, there's no bases. There's no lines. There's, like I said, even, even like it's supposed to be, I guess, a diamond or a square. It's like the grass is growing in and stuff and you know, it's so heavily used and it's used for baseball and softball and all of that. So you know, someone could take a look at that and you know, and in the same vein, I guess. You know, they don't have a goalpost there. You know, the football area field is in pretty bad shape. So you know, that came out of a resident who did attend our Parks Committee meeting. So if someone could take a look at it, I'd really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Right. But it's nice, well, it's nice to know that at least they're thinking about, you know, making a pool and stuff at Pooohulu. Um, because like Kalani Ana Ole is so heavily used by so many sports, rugby, flag football, all of the above. We do need more fields and you know, stuff for kids and you know, I always say, we should have a pool here. We should be cranking out Olympic swimmers and you know, um, ocean safety should be like recruiting our kids. There's such good swimmers and all of that. But they need to be properly trained in a pool. So thank you, Erwin.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get a hold of Nicole and send some pictures I took.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board Member Hano Hano. Okay. Uh, oh, go ahead, Board Member Agustin.
Thank you. This past weekend, uh, the Malama Learning Center uh, helped with the Mulivai. And what they're asking is if the city and county can come in to clear more of the Kiave lower branches to allow them to continue restoration in the area, um, mostly behind where the Kanu Hala is. And um, I don't know how you're able to get your facility and trucks into the deeper in over there.
Sure.
And also the bridge that's underneath that, the bridge that they built, the railway baseline is still there and the rust from it is seeping into the water. And it's um, harming the environment. So we want to take a look at that. And the base of the pillars are also cracked and deteriorating. So we can get somebody looking at repairs for the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, seeing no other questions online, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to, oh, I apologize. Please.
I just put it on record that I'll be following up uh, with our Mayor's Rep, Erwin Coata. I'll send you the email regarding the, the letter that was sent to our appointed Senator Cross Crab. They never answered anything that I might on these questions or responded. That's in poor taste. I have no use for him anymore. Uh, but I want to send this forward to you to follow up because I have not, but it's been a week. I have not gotten a response from the mayors. And I could correspond with our, with Gary, uh, the Governor's Rep as well. So maybe we can get an answer because it's impacting our city councilwoman, Andrew Tupola. Of all her initiatives, she approved the four uh, group living housing on the Senate District 22. But all the other operations on, that's happening right now, has no conditional use permits. So that's, that's in violation of our city rules as well. So I'll bring it to your attention. Let's put it on record. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, I think we can move on to Border Water Supply.
Okay, thank you, Board Chair. Um, so for Border Water Supply, there were no main breaks for this area uh, for last month. And then just wanted to announce for September 28th, there is a Imagine a Day Without Water event on Saturday and September 28th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Kapolei Regional Park. Uh, admission is free. There will be food and other activities for the entire family. So everyone is welcome to attend. And that's all I have for this uh, month for Border Water Supply.
Okay, very good. Board Members, any questions for Border Water Supply? Questions, community, any questions for Border Water Supply? I'm looking online. I see none. Thank you very much, Erwin, for being with us. Drive safely back home. All right, uh, let's go ahead and move on to Congresswoman Jill Takura. I believe we have Representative online. Jill Takura's office, are you online? No?
No, I'm, I'm so sorry. She um, informed me she's not going to be able to make it this month, but she will, um, she does have a slated to attend next month.
Okay. Hmm, yeah, if she can inform me the next time, uh, that would be, that would be great. Uh, but thank you for, yeah, thank you for uh, communicating that. All right. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on to Councilmember Tupola. I see we have Kika in the room with us. Thank you, Kika.
Good evening. Kika Tupenny, uh, Councilmember Tupola's case, community caseworker. Uh, I first want to um, introduce our new staff member. Uh, because of the high demand of projects and all the stuff that Councilmember takes on, uh, we, we, we hired two more staff, but I wanted to introduce Jeannie Timotell. She's also a resident here in Waianae and um, she'll be working alongside me in the community. So any questions, please ask me directly or Jeannie, if you guys want things to be done quickly. Um, other than that, um, we don't have anything to report and Councilmember would like to um, apologize for her absence today. But we are open for any questions or concerns.
Very good. We'll go to Board first. Board Members, any questions for Councilmember Tupola? Okay, Board Member Myers, then Board Member Ayol. Oh, go ahead. Board Member Ayol first.
Can your new employee come up and then uh, give us a resume? Can she?
Yeah, sure. Actually, it's very interesting. Yeah.
Come on up.
Um, hi, aloha. Thank you for letting me be here. I appreciate it in God's name. Um, my background, resume per se, I'm actually came from city also. I worked with Border Water Supply, Mr. Coata, the customer service care for 10 years. So not only that, I'm actually, my family is in the stomping roots of the Nanakuli Samui Church here on Kahau Street. My pastor is Yaseh Tuau. My, the previous pastor was um, let's see, Nisa Timotell. That is my father's uncle. So my father is Seal Timotell. So he is stomping roots of Nanakuli himself. So my family is pretty much bread and butter here. Right? So we are St. John's. We are down in Miley Elementary. I was Miley Elementary School also. Um, but I do reside in Waipahu, but my heart beats for Waianae. So I appreciate you all here. Mahalo.
Mahalo for that. Right on.
Thank you and welcome. Um, Kika, I wanted to ask Councilmember Tupola a couple of things. Um, so last night, we had the town hall meeting with Rapila and then she coordinated with him. So if next month can a newsletter come from Councilmember Tupola about all the things that she is taking initiative over um, on that had come from that town hall? The outcome of the feedback. There was much, um, there was so much good feedback that came from the community members. And I, maybe she can give us the bullet points for it um, by watching the video or of, of the meeting last night. I, I'm trying to remember some of them as far as to be able to follow up with the individuals' names, but I didn't have, I didn't write down their names, but after, I was like, I wish I wrote that person's name so I can reach out to that person. So if you can do that, um, I also appreciated how she gave a lot of community engagement. And it's most specifically that these, these students that are in the room tonight, how they participated. Um, it was just very touching to hear their feedback. And I think the adults should makala what they were saying um, so that we can help with the solutions. But I think by Councilmember coming with the newsletter to driving it home as far as what are those things. So we don't forget it and we just don't leave it on the side. I also want to applaud her and thank her for, in August's meeting, last month's meeting, um, she gave us a report that I didn't even realize that you guys were doing that. um, she gave us a report that I didn't even realize that you guys were doing that. So she asked us if we noticed that the homeless were no longer using our beaches. I remember when 7-Eleven, when I used to see a lot of gig campments and now they're gone. Only when she pointed that out, you know, all the way up to from I I I didn't recognize it until she mentioned it, that that's right. You know, those people are getting now help with shelters, et cetera. And you know, are no longer on the beaches. And so I really, really appreciate those efforts that all of you in, as part of our team at uh City Council, that the work that you guys did. Um, can we also get a update regarding, I think, House Resil- I mean, City Council Bill 50? Um, the one regarding all the changes that they're making to the zoning rules and laws?
64. 64.
Yes. It's Bill 64. Bill 64. If we can also have that in the newsletter as far as where is it in the reading, when is it going to come back to committee, et cetera. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Uh, online we have Johnny Mae Perry. Uh, Johnny, Johnny Mae, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Kika, um, I went to the three Rs and um it it was a wonderful one hour spent. But um what I found out while being there, the outreach workers are being um harmed by the dogs. And there was somebody there to provide dog food. So maybe instead of only dog food, maybe they can provide dog leashes to give to the families so they can leash their dogs so the outreach workers don't get bitten by the dogs. Thank you.
Sorry, could I? Oh, thank you, Johnny Mae, actually, for being there. Uh, thank you for volunteering. We want to thank everybody that actually takes part of our R3 program. It's a big part of why Nanakuli looks the way that it looks um right now. But with with that, Humane Society works with us with the dogs. They do get leashes and we are actually working with a neuter, spayed and neuter program. It's affordable that they're gonna help us help the Ulehaava population. Uh, Jeannie and I actually walked that place and we counted all the dogs. So we know who don't have owners, what dogs need to be taken by Humane Society and which ones um pretty much need shelters. So yeah, it's it, dogs are are important, not just our, I mean, our homeless is important, but our dogs are too. So we counted the dogs at Ulehaava and just to let you know, there's about 250 dogs there. Yeah. Just, yeah.
You just opened up a whole can of worms with that one. All right, very good. Uh, go ahead. You can go to the microphone.
Aloha. I'd like to uh echo our Neighborhood Board, Jermaine Myers, while she has spoken about Bill 64 by the City, City Council. To further elaborate on that, uh, I think our whole Senate District 22 needs to oppose the resurrected Bill 64 from previous Bill 10. It was, it was already opposed from the get-go already. But Kailua Estakiaina resurrected with conclusively legal words inside here, with conclusive actions of legal terms that the normal person cannot understand. But you look at all the details of especially group living. It it eliminates all condition to use permit city type of uh matters inside. It's all legal, but it's conclusively done. We need to oppose, object protest against Bill 64 in its entirety. Squash it. That's my say. So.
Okay, very good. All right, I think that's it for uh Councilmember Tupola. Kika, thank you very much for being with us. And Jeannie, thank you very much. Welcome to the team. Get your sunscreen. You're gonna be doing a lot of workout there. Very good. Um, okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to uh State Senator Cross Crab. I believe we have Patrice online.
Aloha. Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Senator Crab is actually on a, in a conference right now. So I'm here to, first of all, I wanted to respond to Austin Salsedo's um his question regarding that letter. Um, just wanted to let him know that this Thursday, we actually have a a meeting with the AG's office. So I think that might have been the reason why he didn't respond to your letter so far. But we do have an appointment on Thursday. And um, just if anybody has any questions or concerns, I'm here to help.
Okay, very well. Go to the board first. Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Shoot.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Patrice.
Hi.
Um, Patrice, what are the office hours of when someone is in uh at the state capitol, at Senator Cross Crab's office? When I used to go there when it was Senator Miley, I always used to see the office manager there. Is someone actually there in the office?
Believe so. Um, I don't, I've always kind of been in the community. So I I would think it'd be a nine to five. If it's like the the set um time, but I mean, it depends on what's going on. Sometimes they're they're late if it's doing session and stuff like that. And other times they're not there for other reasons. So did you want to schedule something?
Yeah, oh, yes. And can you um ask if the Panina is actually, or somebody is actually in the office Monday through Friday? What are the hours? And yes, I'd like to schedule a meeting, please. Thank you.
I wanted to let you know that um I just emailed you the response that you were asking for from Senator. I just emailed this to you right before the meeting.
Yes, I got it. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Uh, go ahead. Uh, community?
Aloha, Patrice.
Hi.
Thank you for responding for our appointed uh Senator. But uh, we need to know because this was made to him on September 2nd. It's already September 17. There was no notification on email addressed to me or the Neighborhood Boards who have put on copy CC to the to the Wainai and Nanakuli Neighborhood Boards. So if he does have a correspondence or any type of response from the Attorney General's Office, it needs to be sent to me along with our Neighborhood Board officials, Nanakuli and Wainai, because SR30 does affect the Senate District 22. It impacts us because of unsafe conditions in here. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you reaching out for him, Patrice.
Thank you.
But I think he should have been here himself.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, Kalei Sausero. Oh, Patricia, she's such a sweetheart, let me tell you. I love you dearly. You just sit around the office with the wrong person. Okay. I would want the appointed Mr. Cross Crab to hold a town hall meeting in person, not on Zoom, to hear the concerns of the whole 96792. Don't be shy. Okay? Not on Zoom where you control everything, you control the mic, you control everything in person. You folks owe the community debt, the whole 96792. You can hold one Nanakuli, you can hold one Wainai. Okay? You are state-appointed legislators. Do the talk, you do a lot of talk. Let's do the walk. I'm gonna see it. Mahalo.
Thank you. Just to let you guys know too, we are, well, it's still in the motions of it, like planning it, but we are planning on holding a education and another town hall, but we'll let you guys know as soon as that finalizes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to uh Representative Darius Keela. This is Christine or Doreen online? Okay, we don't see. No? Okay, very good. We're gonna go ahead and move on to Army. Uh, Army, there we go. Okay, very good. Thank you so much for being here in person. The the camouflage was so good, I didn't even see you in the back of the room. That's how good it was. You blended really well.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Lieutenant Colonel Jason Kappas, the Army representative. Um, just two things to talk about today, the training advisory for the rest of September. So we have artillery and mortar training scheduled for the rest of this week, the 17th through the 19th of September. And then some aviation training on the 19th of September. That's only during the day. The big thing I want to talk about is JPMRC. That's the Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center. That's happening at the beginning of next month. I'll be involved in that. That occurs from October 7th through 16th. That will involve, time's up already? Oh, man. That involves 1,000 multinational partners from multiple, multiple different nations. Malaysia, New Zealand, Indonesia, Thailand, Japan, Singapore, Maldives, Australia and Canada, which is a big increase from last year. Expect to see an increase of military convoy traffic starting on about September 26th until the exercise starts. And during the exercise, you can expect to hear a lot of aircraft activity, combat simulations, UAS drone activity during the day, but also at night because of course we want to own the night. A lot of that aircraft activity will take place mainly during around Wheeler Army Airfield and Dillingham Army Airfield. Um, if you have any concerns, you can contact the Community Concern Line. That's 808 787-1528. And of course, we'd like to thank the community for understanding and patience during this time. If you're feeling bad, just know I'll be out there sleeping on the ground, getting attacked, hopefully sleeping on the ground during that time. This also occurs next month during the Neighborhood Board. So hopefully if combat isn't too rough, I'll try to dial in so that I have some representation here. And any questions? That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you very much. We'll open it up to Board Members' questions. Board Members, community, any questions? Seeing none, none online? Okay, well, very good. Thank you very much for being with us in person. And please be safe out there. We appreciate your dedication. Go ahead, Navy. I think Jewel is going first, yeah? Okay, I see you online, Jewel. Go ahead and unmute yourself and give your report.
Hello, Jewel from Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, Navy. I actually sent an email about, um, I had a PowerPoint sent out, but it's okay if if no can. But basically, I just have two things, uh, environmental concern surveys. So the Navy has an anonymous survey to help us understand the community and what their concerns are about environmental rest restoration sites. That also includes Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, Wainai Coast slash Lualulei, as well as Central Oahu. So this anonymous survey basically helps inform the development of Navy's environmental restoration program, which it will also be available to the community. So the community involvement plan will be shared as soon as that is operated. In addition, the last thing that I have is fire mitigation. I know people spoke about fire in the past. But I do want to address, I know some people heard maybe Sunday there was a fire that occurred, but I want to reiterate and say that in May, um, there's a group of Navy facilities, engineering systems, command employee took similar proactive measures for power lines and flammable material at Lualulei. So actually, electrical linemen relocated a section of above-ground high voltage line in Kalailoa. So that that was in Sunday. That was in a severely overgrown area. So this past Sunday's large brush fire was right in the heart of that overgrown area. And it would have severed electrical service, but thankfully to the efforts that were you, that were done in the past, this prevented the worst from happening. So I just want to say because of those proactive things that they've done, the similar group from Navy did the same thing for Lualulei. And then we'll just turn it to Uncle Vic.
Very good. Thank you, Jewel. Uncle Vic, go ahead, take it away.
Thank you, Jewel. My, prevention is the key. You have the written report. I'm only going to cover two things. Um, the Wainai Coast Emergency Access Route, the Navy actually paved uh, the road part and connected it to the access route part. So we're moving forward with the bypass somewhere down the line. It's not going to be a emergency road. It's going to be a 24/7 road. That's what we're ultimately working for. And Kaula Kaula Pass is clear and passable in case of a declared emergency. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for Jewel or myself?
Board Members, any questions? Go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, for your report. My question is, when will be the next time that you're uh that Navy will clean up Lualulei Naval Road? I see a lot of trash on both sides. I think one time I saw a boat.
Yeah, there's one more.
And a Jacuzzi tub. I saw a Jacuzzi tub. And beds and stuff. So when would be, do you have something coming up uh for the cleanup? I mean, I'm just wondering for public safety, for those that drive up that road?
Right, we we do have somebody that controls that. Normally, according to our licenses that we have with Pacific Mall, PVT, Georgette's Place and Ma'o, they take care of their sections. So that one would be mostly PVT or Georgette's one. So I have to call them and ask them to pick it up. And if they don't, we'll have to.
Okay, and then two more questions.
Yeah.
Um, RJ Martin, has he come to uh Navy to speak about using Lualulei Naval Road and um, or to get approval to use, use it for the uh his housing development?
Yes, he has.
Did Navy approve it?
No, it's still in the talking. What they're interested in um is opening up that uh road that runs parallel to the canal.
Oh, the the emergency access road?
Well, it was a road. And then the 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 road used to come out by the Kaiser Nani, Nani, Nani I Paula. Uh, that was a road, but they they, there's a fence there now.
Okay. And then the last question is, have you guys had any incidents with the West Side Mauna Pavilion, the one that I was speaking to HPD about earlier?
Yeah, um as a matter of fact, it's kind of the opposite. They keep us aware of what's going on out there. Uh and uh if there's any hanky panky, we get the police out there real quick. Uh, this was brought up kind of a while ago, um, Jermaine with um their business. And our issue is not so much the cars, but the trucks, the big trucks. The the trucks is what rips up the road. So that's our concern with that. Um but ultimately, when that road opens up, you know, their address is actually Palkeha, not Navy Road. So it'll kind of go back to the way it was years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Um, community, any questions for Navy? Uh, go ahead up to the microphone, please. And virtual, if you have a question for Navy, please raise your virtual hand. We'll get right to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is James Scowles. How you doing, Victor?
Hi, James.
No, I'm good. I'm gonna be, I think the road you're talking about at the end, is um the very end of Hakemo Road. And the owners back there fenced off part of the road because they said that they own that section of the road up there. That's why it was blocked off and fenced off. They fenced it off because they used to have like me, some truck drivers going through there. And they didn't like the idea, but at night you used to have a lot of people going in, like kids going in there and speeding run outside there in that, in that small, old housing area. And that's, I think that's the road you're talking about. They they fenced it off and eventually they're gonna open it up, I think.
That's my ability. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, I see that that's all the questions. Seeing none online. Thank you very much uh for your report. Jewel, thank you very much uh for being with us online. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to board business. I'm gonna go ahead and give it over to Board Member Myers uh with regards to some resolutions. Go ahead, Board Member Myers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Board Members, on September 10th, 2024, the Housing and Zoning Committee members included myself and member Richard Lanford Jr., Uncle Richard. Um, also in attendance at our committee meeting were 12 community members. You have before you a number one, a one-page structure summary. It outlines the components of the Kahale Resolution. Number two, a five-page Kahale Resolution for your consideration titled Draft Resolution on Kahale Projects Proposed to Be Built in Representative District 44 and Senate District 22. And number three, a four-page report created by Committee Chair David Corona that outlines the issues of the two Maili, Mailiili road parcels being considered for Kahale. It shows the Kula'au Puni street drainage issue with photos of flooding after normal rainfall. And it also shows the Kula'au Puni street improvements needed for public safety. After full discussions of the draft Kahale Resolution and Kula'au Puni street drainage issues and needed street improvements for public safety. And after amendments were made, which are handwritten on the draft, or committee, our committee passed a motion unanimously in support of the draft Kahale Resolution with amendments for board consideration this evening. Chair, in consideration of the board minutes, that the board minutes are in video Chair, in consideration of the board minutes, that the board minutes are in video form, I will read the draft resolution in full. 2023, the first component is Senate, 2023 Senate Resolution 30 SD1. Whereas the Senate of the 32nd Legislature of the State of Hawaii, regular session of 2020, Senate Resolution Number 30 SD1 urged the state and city and county of Honolulu to recognize and address the inequitable locating of mental health facilities, clean and sober homes, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes across the island of Oahu, particularly the prevalence of these facilities and homes along the Waianae Coast. And whereas the large number of mental health facilities, clean and sober homes, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes along Oahu's Waianae Coast has caused individuals struggling with mental health issues and substance use problems to be referred to services along the Waianae Coast from other areas of Oahu. And whereas due to these factors, residents living along the Waianae Coast have urged the government to increase access to mental health facilities, clean and sober homes, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes more evenly across the state. The next section is State of Hawaii Kahale Initiative. Whereas the State of Hawaii Kahale Initiative defined its goal to establish 12 Kahale projects over the next three years, with six on Oahu, two in each of Hawaii, Maui, and Koai counties. And whereas the State of Hawaii Kahale Initiatives states that every Kahale will be a partnership between government and community, with state funding used to empower community champions and to fill resource gaps. And whereas the State of Hawaii Kahale Initiative was first inspired by community-based efforts like Pu'uho Nua O'Wai'a'nae located in Waianae Valley and Hui Mahia'a'ina located in Wa'manalo. And the next section, Hawaii Interagency Council on Homelessness, HICH. Whereas the Hawaii Interagency Council on Homelessness, HICH, is an advisory body that serves as a statewide homelessness planning and policy development entity mandated to meet once a quarter and are typically scheduled on the third Monday of March, June, September, and December, of which the last meeting was agendized and held on October 26, 2023 in compliance with Sunshine Law. And whereas the HICH acknowledges a parity approach for all of the 25 statewide Senate districts in its 10-year strategic plan and framework to end homelessness, of which its system vision recognized that the work to end homelessness cannot be addressed by any one government entity or provider alone, and requires a shared community effort and all hands-on-deck approach. And the next section is HICH, Five Priorities, Flip Nimby to Yimby. Nimby is not in my backyard. Yimby is yes in my backyard. Whereas the HICH, Five Priorities include the priority to flip nimby, not in my backyard, to yimby, yes in my backyard, to support its other four priorities, which include deeply affordable space, Kahale, community housing. And the next section is titled Senate District 22 Have Been Yimby, Yes in My Backyard, for a total of 18 projects for up to 4,188 individuals each day. Whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Kahale Structure Starting in 2007, the U.S. Vets Waianae Civic Center is the only U.S. Vet site in the nation that provides services to both veteran and civilian families, providing comprehensive care to nearly 200 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Kahale Structure Starting in 2020, when the Pu'uho Nua O'Wai'a'nae purchased a 20-acre property in Waianae Valley to provide shelter stability for up to 250 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Kahale Structure Starting in 2021, Cedar Church Farm in Waianae Valley provides shelter stability for up to 100 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Transitional Housing Structures, starting in 1990, Catholic Charities Ma'ili Land Transitional Housing provides shelter stability for up to 150 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Transitional and Permanent Housing Structures, starting in 2008, Kahikolu Ohana Hale O'Wai'a'nae provides shelter stability for up to 150 men, women, and children each. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Transitional Housing Structures, starting in 2008, Ulu Ke'kukui in Ma'ili provided shelter stability for up to 340 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Transitional Housing Structures, starting in 2019, Catholic Charities Villages of Ma'ili provided shelter stability for up to 340 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Nontraditional Permanent Housing Structures, starting in 2016, Halona Road Modular Housing, located in Waianae, provides shelter stability for up to 13 women and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Nontraditional Permanent Housing Structures, starting in 2018, Kahale Kamaila N'Wai'a'nae provides shelter stability for up to 60 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Kupuna Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 2009, Nana'ike'ola Senior Apartment provides stability for up to 80 kupuna each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Kupuna Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 2009, Ke'ola Ho'omalu Elderly Up to 70 kupuna each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 1980s, Wa'maha Sunflower in Wai'a'nae provides shelter stability for up to 710 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 2009, Ko'e'oh Colony in Wai'a'nae provides shelter stability for up to 350 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 2010, Halevi Vista Phase 1 in Wai'a'nae provides shelter stability for up to 320 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 2010, Halevi Vista Phase 2 in Waianae provides shelter stability for up to 725 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 2011, Seawinds in Wai'a'nae provides shelter stability for up to 170 men, women, and children each day. Whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 2013, Halema'kana'o Ma'ili, Halema'kana'o Nanakuli in Nanakuli provides shelter stability for up to 240 men, women, and children each day. And whereas the State Senate District 22 Have Been Yes in My Backyard, with Permanent Affordable Housing Structures, starting in 2020, Halema'kana'o Ma'ili in Ma'ili provides shelter stability for up to 260 men, women, and children each day. And under the section, Kahale Proposed for Two Ma'ili Road Properties. Whereas the State proposed to build Kahale on the property located at 87-045 Ma'ili'i Road, tax map key 8-7-001-019, without first addressing the unsafe pedestrian and water flooding conditions, including lack of proper streetlights, pedestrian sidewalks, and improper drainage infrastructure, causing dangerous heavy water flooding during and after rainfall within the properties and roadways. And whereas the State proposed to build Kahale on the property located at 86-145 Ma'ili'i Road with easement on Kula'au Puni Street without first, oh, tax map key 87-001-019, without first addressing the unsafe pedestrian and water flooding conditions, including lack of proper streetlights, pedestrian sidewalks, and improper drainage infrastructure, causing dangerous heavy water flooding during and after rainfall within the properties and roadways. Now, therefore, under the section, Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board urges state to increase Kahale evenly across 17 Senate districts on Oahu. Be it resolved that the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board urges the State of Hawaii to increase access to Kahale, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes more evenly across the state and all of its 17 Senate districts on Oahu. And be it further resolved that the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board urges the State of Hawaii to use the Governor's 2023 Emergency Proclamation related to homelessness to increase access to Kahale, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes by flipping nimby, not in my backyard, to yimby, yes in my backyard, equally in all of its 17 Senate districts on Oahu. And Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board opposes the building of Kahale on two properties on Ma'ili Road. Be it further resolved that the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board opposes the building of Kahale on the property located at 87-045 Ma'ili'i Road. And be it further resolved that the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board opposes the building of Kahale on the property located at 86-145 Ma'ili'i Road with easement on Kula'au Puni Street. And be it further resolved that certified copies of this resolution be transmitted to the governor of Hawaii, members of the Hawaii Legislature, the Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness, members of the Hawaii Interagency Council on Homelessness, Director of Health, Director of Human Services, State Attorney General, Director of Public Safety, Chief Justice of the Hawaii Supreme Court, Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu, members of the Honolulu City Council, Chief of the Honolulu Police Department, Director of the City and County of Honolulu, Department of Planning and Permitting, Prosecuting Attorney of the City and County of Honolulu, Executive Secretary of the Neighborhood Board Commission Office of the City and County of Honolulu, and all neighborhood boards.
Thank you, Board Member.
Hold on one second. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please proceed.
After receiving feedback from Chair, I'd like to make additional amendments tonight as follows. Whereas the Chairman of the Department of Hawaiian Homeland confirmed by email on August 22, 2024 to our board that Kahale will not be built on DHHL trust lands. Whereas John Mizuno, Governor's Coordinator on Homeless, confirmed in person at the Waianae Neighborhood Board meeting on August 6, 2024, that Kahale will not be built on DHHL trust lands. Whereas Eric Ford, Staff of the Statewide Office on Homelessness and Housing Solutions, confirmed in person at the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board meeting on August 20, 2024, that Kahale will not be built on DHHL trust lands. Be it further resolved that the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board is assured by DHHL and the SOHHS that Kahale will not be built on DHHL trust lands. Chair, your Housing Zoning Committee makes a motion for the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board to support the resolution on Kahale projects proposed to be built in Representative District 44 and Senate District 22.
Thank you very much, Board Member Myers. Do I have a second to that motion? Then we can open it up for discussion.
I second.
Okay, very good. Board, it's open for discussion.
Take your vote first, if you want. You can take your guys' vote first.
Okay, are we ready to take a vote? Okay, let's go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for including every single area in the community that has housed and sheltered and supported people in need within our community. This list should be a statement piece to our legislation to let them know that we are supporting a lot of people in need, and there are other areas that we can focus on now. So thank you for this comprehensive list. It was a lot of work, and I appreciate that you did that.
I second that. Thank you very much, Board Member Myers, for your great work and your thoroughness and your extensive research that you've done. Mahalo. Mahalo. Okay, very good. Are we ready to take the vote? Okay. Jeffrey, I'll go ahead, we'll take a roll vote.
All right. Still discussion. Is it still discussion or?
Yes. Discussion, go ahead.
Well, the last thing on the, I think everybody's got this one. The last thing says Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board opposes the building of Kahale on two properties, and those two properties are on Ferentin Highway, right? If I'm not mistaken. Yep, Ferentin and Ma'ili'i Road. But they're on the east side of the canal. It's called the White House, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct? It's called the White House, that's sitting on a corner. Is that DHHL land or private land? I don't know.
So the parcel of land is in the map that I emailed all of you. It borders on both sides of the canal. So the canal is in the middle. It's on Ma'ili'i Street, so which is when you're coming off of Ferentin Highway, you turn right to go to Waianae Comprehensive, all along the right side, all of that land. In addition to the canal is part of that parcel. In addition to the property that is along the property borderline of Halema'kana'o Ma'ili, and then ends up on, wait, I'm always having a hard time with the street. Yes. So to answer your question, DLNR owns that parcel of land. DLNR. Yes, DLNR. And I just want to confirm to the community that we did receive an email from Rep Keela the day after our committee meeting, that the State, John Mizuno, he said that they are not going to build on that property. They withdraw building on those two parcels, or that two properties, one parcel. And so, but we still want to make it clear that we don't want any more in our Senate District 22.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board members, any other discussion? Very good. All right. Are we ready for the vote now? Go ahead, we're taking the vote.
All right, so I'm gonna go down to the list that I have.
All right, so I'm gonna go down the list that I have. Board Member Ayo. Board Member Agustin.
Aye.
Chair DeCort.
Support.
Board Member Myers.
Yes.
For the record, Board Member Corona did hop offline, but we do still have quorum for this vote. That's one to put that on the record. Board Member Naomi Hono Hono, online.
Yes.
And Board Member Ed Hono Hono. The motion carries. The Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board supports the proposed resolutions with a vote count of six.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, board, Chair. I, I just, I just wanted to express that it was a very interesting meeting because we had people from both sides of, you know, of the issues. So, and we I, I think we walked away not agreeing, but you know, trying to look at the solutions. One of the reasons that, that, that we have to address is even if they put up the Kalahale homes and stuff, will that remove our people from the beaches? Because all of the, the information that we've had is there is open spaces on all the facilities that's available. But the people at the beach are not satisfied with them, I guess, you know? So even if we build nine hundred homes and the beaches still continue to grow, you know, I, I think they're using it as a false reason to, you know, get programs built or, or, you know, places built with programs and stuff like that. So we gotta address the two main issues to me on the beaches is we gotta place these guys and we gotta take care of our mental health guys. The mental health guys were just growing every day, you know, leaps and bounds. And to me, that's where my main concern is, the, the mental health. The guy that hitting his head against the coconut tree and stuff like that. Those are the guys that really need help, but there's no place for them. You know, and then of course, the, the people that's medically, you know, hard time and stuff like that. And I feel sorry for them, but for some reason, they don't want to go to these, you know, shelters that we have available. And I know there's rules and stuff like that. I'm not familiar with the rules. I have never checked it. But I believe that the meeting that was held is going in the right direction. We have to make sure it's going to be built for the right reason and not just will be built because it's a program that's available. Thank you again for holding that meeting and I'm very proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Lampford, I will say thank you very much for the time that you've taken to be a part of this committee and a part of this discussion. We're gonna go ahead online. Also, community, if you have anything you'd like to share on this topic, please line up to the microphone. We'll go ahead online. Johnny May Perry, if you could unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Jermaine. There's a whole lot. I'm not surprised. It was, you got every, every all the inventory that impacts our community. And this has been going over twenty years, something years. I think there needs to be a shift. Why, why are we carrying the load for the entire island? Part of it is our elected officials and part of it is the officials in the state capital that refuses to have this sort of kind of program in their community. So our elected officials take it on every levels. Again, Jermaine, awesome, awesome, awesome. It's like a runaway train. You know, the focus there and what our kids' education is going south. Wrong direction, ladies and gentlemen. We should take care of the kekis, invest in them because they will invest in our community and have a better life and that will minimize crime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then please hold that thought virtual. We have an in-person community member. Go ahead.
This is Austin Salsedo. This is actually impacting our diligent work of our councilwoman Andrea Topola trying to get relieve the, the pain that's receiving on from Kahipoi all the way to Kiava'ula. We have the largest ocean coastline. Our state governor is not implementing and executing the US Supreme Court ruling on sitting law in public spaces. They had made a ruling of the US Supreme Court. You cannot do that anymore. Aole, it's US Supreme Court, it's not Hawaii rule. Our governor is aiding and abetting because of federal funding in support of all this. So where the problem lies, it's our old state government. So US Supreme Court already made the ruling, cannot sit in a public space or how would I say, congest our public space for the public usage of our public space. Our Kahipoi all the way to Kiava'ula, that's our public space. So that's the US Supreme Court ruling, only our state not doing it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, going online, Kapua first, then Dana, then Jax. Go ahead, Kapua, you can unmute your Zoom and then you can make your statement. Kapua, are you there? Well, oh, there you are. I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Okay, we'll come back to you, Kapua. Dana, go ahead if you can unmute yourself and make your statement.
Once again, I, I challenged the, the document in a sense that, you know, I, I didn't realize that having an affordable income development like Halevi Vista would be considered a shelter because it isn't. It's regular rental housing. So some of the numbers are quite skewed. I am not in support of additional homeless shelters. But I am in support of really taking a look at how Kalahale as a traditional village style can assist in bringing communities together. Again, we come from a culture of Kanaka. Hawaiian homes, you know, is built on the premises, premise of building a village, you know, the Ainahoa Pula Pula. You know, coming together as people to really strengthen community bonds. And again, the fight with homeless or individuals who are houseless is is not relevant because that's our Ohana that's on the beaches. Many of the names that are on the beaches are connected to many of the individuals in the homesteads. So just, just be Akamai to what you guys are doing in terms of, you know, it's not about us and them. It's really about all of us together doing the work. That's my statement. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Jax. You can unmute yourself. I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Jeffrey sent you a request also.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good. Go ahead, thank you.
Aloha. Aloha. So, so what I wanted to share with you, for me, this is a difficult vote to watch you guys come down with. And the reason why is none of the people that are stepping up right now have come up with any solution. But here was a solution that was culturally realistic. It was, it was tied in. Instead, we're gonna be left with the same pattern we've had before, which is expanding. And, and that's what no one's talking about here, expanding cedar farm, which everyone's saying that's illegal. Expanding the, the military institutional US vets, which my point to you is they did not solve the problem. We've had it grow and grow as Mr. Salsedo just pointed out. It's growing and those solutions have not worked. So here was a different solution. It was a local solution and it was something that came from Waimea's Na'au from deep down in, and you guys just killed it. And nobody's got anything to, to solve the growing mass of people that's all on it, no matter how Andrea, you know, treats them up and down the coast. Because you can look right now at sewers and see half of it, she has got fencing to clear it out, but they're all over on the other side now. So I don't know what realistic solution came out of this. Jermaine did brilliant work, there's no question. But I, I think one of the things is some of it was regular housing and also some of it was, are we really identifying what's in Maili? And, and what, and what's in Nanakuli itself? Not really. We never got that sorted out. So I think there's a lot of work still to be done. I don't think this needs to be the end of it. But somebody, seeing where you guys are tonight, I'd really like to hear some solutions now that you killed the only solution that anybody was coming forward with. Thank you. That's me. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Jax. We're gonna go to Kapua and see if she can unmute herself. We'll try it again. You're, you are unmuted, but we can't hear you. If you want, you can type it in the chat.
Are you talking to?
Oh, I think that's you. There you are. Go ahead. There you are.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I've had some challenges with this. Like I mentioned earlier, I, I do agree with some of the sentiment that has come through already to include Dana's and other Jax's. You know, it's true. We need to come up with the solutions. And one of the solutions that Jermaine has identified is to convert those NIMBY communities to YIMBY communities, similar to the Waimea Moku. And to have HPD, have the county enforce their county laws all over Oahu, not just on the south side, not just in Waikiki, but out here on the west side too, because when you drive around the island, you will see parks that don't have a single houseless person there. And why is that? It's because they have absolute enforcement of no houseless. So why is it that we have little to no enforcement except for those so-called compassionate sweeps? Ever that we have, whenever they feel like enforcement on the laws and yet other communities have hundred percent enforcement. So that's one of the solutions too. Because we're, what we're talking about is injustice that continues to occur on our Waimea Moku. We need to not only have more bees on this island, we need to have more enforcement. If I have to get a permit to go camping on the beach, then we should all get it. Now, not everybody can, so what do we do with those? I want to help those people that want to help themselves. I want to help Waimea Moku Kupuna Council sponsor their Kalahale wherever they feel it. Because the difference between them and a government entity is that they are our people. The Waimea Moku Kupuna Council and those that they are working with like Dana and Kita Nani and others that are with them, Nina and Lynette and all of the other Kupuna, they are working it. That's not the government coming here and saying that we're gonna put these people here and this is how we're gonna do it. That's a Kanaka saying, we are gonna practice our culture. We hehava'i au, hehava'i makau. No la'ila aloha ke kahi ike kahi. And what we need is to be pono, ku pono apau. Aole ku pono malalo ika Oahu tahema aole. Ku pono o'ahu apau. That's, that's what we need. And we also need, when the county and the state does home developments, it is for first time new purchase. Not for the new, for all of the rich people, all of the affluent people to buy their second, third, fourth, fifth property so that we continue to be renters. No, what we want is for all of our local people to be a homeowner. And we also want to help those that need the help, are open to the help and are ready for the help. Because you can't help somebody that's not ready for it. So what do we do with them and for them? I don't know. But I do know that our people need help and I support that. Mahalo nu'i'be.
Very good. Thank you very much. Very good. Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next agenda item. We've got a little over thirty minutes left and we still have a few more board items to go over. So again, I'm gonna give it back over to Board Member Myers. And she is going to go over the resolution for the HONU program. So please, Board Member Myers.
Yes, Board Members, at last month's meeting, I made a motion. So it was clarified that the motion could stand by the NCO Executive Secretary. So I'm gonna make the motion again tonight for voting and if needed, discussion. The Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board opposes the City HONU Program Services at Nanikai Beach Park from September twenty twenty-four through December twenty twenty-four.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second on that motion?
I second.
All right, we'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion? If not, we're gonna go ahead and take the vote? No discussion? No discussion? Okay, I'll give it over to Jeffrey to do a roll call vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'll just go down the list that I have. In this case, with the verbiage that was given, that the the Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board opposes the City HONU Program Services. If you vote aye in this case, it'll be showing that you are in opposition. If you vote no, it'll be the opposite. Just in the verbiage of, of the motion, just to clarify. So Board Member Ayo. Okay, I'm gonna repeat it. With the verbiage of the motion, with the Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board opposing the City HONU Program Services, if you vote aye, you are voting in opposition due to the verbiage of the motion. If you're voting nay, it shows that you do support the City HONU Program Services.
Yeah, so it's definitely a death row.
So good to clarify, if you do vote aye, you are yes. Yes. I, I did, I did misspeak. So if you do vote aye, you are voting in opposition of the City HONU Program Services. If you vote no or nay, you are showing that you do support the City HONU Program Services due to the verbiage that, that the vote, the motion is made in.
Because Executive Secretary did clarify, the motion is not to choose either one way or the other. The motion is to support the motion. So if you, if you say nay, it just means you're not supporting the motion. Because you could have a different opinion totally. Right? Okay, so it's just, so, okay.
Okay, so I'll restart the vote from the top. Board Member Ayo.
Should, should we read the entire motion just to?
I'll, I'll reread the motion and then I'll restart the voting again. So the motion on the floor is the Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board opposes the City HONU Program Services at Nanikai Beach Park from September twenty twenty-four through December twenty twenty-four. So we're voting with the motion as stated.
Okay, everybody got that? All right, go ahead, take the vote.
Board Member IO? Board Member Agustin?
Aye.
Chair de Court? Board Member Myers?
Aye.
Board Member Naomi Hano Hano online? Board Member Ed Hano Hano?
Okay. No, we'll do another vote. Yeah. Okay, uh Board Members, uh, we're gonna take another vote. We don't have quorum on. If not, we're gonna have to move this on to next month's agenda. So um please, if you can possibly reconsider taking a position on this, uh, we'll go ahead and take another vote.
Okay, so starting from the top, Board Member IO? Board Member Agustin?
Aye.
Chair de Court?
Aye.
Board Member Myers?
Aye.
Board Member Naomi Hano Hano?
Aye.
Board Member Ed Hano Hano? So for the record, there's not been a quorum vote to establish um for this motion. The motion will carry over if the board wishes to next month's agenda for to be taken up for a position.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we're moving on board business. Uh, approval of Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. And uh, the reason this got carried over from last month is cuz there were a lot of discrepancies with our meeting meeting minutes, which I believe it got fixed. Okay, very good. All right. So uh approval of Tuesday, July sixteen, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Uh, I'll go ahead and take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, approval of Tuesday, July sixteen, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Uh, moving on to uh Section E, approval of Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Uh, I'll go ahead again and take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, very good. Approval of August twentieth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Okay, um, and then we are going over to July twenty twenty four, Board Member attendance at community meetings, public hearings continued from August twenty twenty four. The remaining board members that were not able to report were myself, uh, Board Member Agustin, Board Member Corona, uh, Board Member Naomi Hano Hano and Board Member Ed Hano Hano. So um, go ahead, I'm gonna give it over to Jeffrey.
Okay, so the leftover Board Members, Board Member Agustin?
The Nana Kuli High and Intermediate School Back-to-School Bash, Nana Kuli Night Market, Nana Ikapono Hawaiian Civic Club Meeting, All Presentation at Alalikee Building, Representative Keela's Town Hall with Department of Transportation Education Committee. That was all for July. For August?
Board Member Corona is not here. Uh, Board Member Naomi Hano Hano online? This is, again, this is for July twenty twenty four.
I attended a Parks and Rec uh committee meeting for July.
Board Member Ed Hano Hano? Chair de Court?
Oh, Neighborhood Security Watch, Neighborhood Security Watch Walk. Uh, let me see, and that was it for July. I thought, okay, and then we're moving over to August twenty twenty four, Board Meeting. Twenty twenty four Board Member attendance at community meetings. Go ahead.
Okay, so we're good with the list that I have. Uh, Board Member IO?
Land and Water Committee Meeting, Waimanalo Gulch Hearing, Wa- uh Hawaiian Affairs Committee Meeting, Park and Recreation Committee Meeting, Nana Ikapono Elementary School Community Council Meeting, Nana Kuli Night Market.
Board Member Myers?
August six, um, Y nine Neighborhood Board, August fifteenth, Act two seven nine, Working Group at State Legislature. Did you want all the way up to today or are we gonna do September's next month? Can I just?
Just for August.
August, okay. Yep, that's it.
I'm gonna add one, Keela's Town Hall with the HHL. Thank you.
Board Member Naomi Hano Hano online?
Um, for August, uh, the Y nine Neighborhood Board Meeting, uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee Meeting and the Nana Kuli Night Market.
Board Member Ed Hano Hano? And Chair de Court?
Uh, City of Joy Food Drive, Pops Pereira First Annual Invitational, Hope Awareness, uh Neighborhood Security Walk, and that's it?
Okay, very good. All right, that's it for board business. We're moving on to committee reports. Uh, first up, Transportation, uh, here, uh, Housing, we did that already. Uh, did you have another, anything to report for Housing other than the resolutions? Okay, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Chair. In regards to the Housing Committee, Housing and Zoning Committee, um, next month we'll be discussing or gonna be agendizing to discuss where in Senate, uh, where, which set, which Senate districts on Oahu do not have kauhale, do not have uh transitional or emergency shelters? They, I've already identified them. And also, for example, in Hawaii Kai, that they have over five hundred homeless that was on the point-in-time count, but they only currently have shelter for to house a hundred fifty. So their deficit, three hundred and fifty in that Senate district. So coming up with the next Housing Zoning Committee Meeting, will I will agendize for us to go over. And then maybe we'll be coming back with a resolution to share with, again, to those officials where they can go and use the emergency proclamation in order to convert NIMBYs to YSBs in these other Senate districts that we've identified. Mahalo.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Board Member Myers. Uh, moving on to Hawaiian Affairs, uh, Chair Tector is not with us tonight. Moving on to Park and Rec, uh, Chair Tector is not with us tonight. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to Water and Land. Uh, Chair Agustin of the Water and Land Committee, go ahead.
Water and Land Committee met on September fifth. We had six members present and or six people present. We discussed uh concerns in relation to the environmental impact statement for the Army Training Land Retention from Mokuu Military Reservation and submit a public comment as well as the Waimanalo Gulch San- Sanitary Landfill and submit a public comment. And a uh, they had passed the Waimanalo Gulch had passed, and that's in our minutes. So coming up is the Malama Learning Center. We did community service at the Mulivai and a request has been made for both Malama Learning Center and Kuliana Coral to be invited at our next board meeting to present. Be coming up. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Education Chair, uh, back over to Agustin.
We had four present on September fifth, discussions uh, relation to Nana Ikapono Elementary School Crossing Guard Position, as mentioned earlier, and discussions on what the needs are within each school as well as dates to attend the school community council meetings and governing board meetings collaboratively. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Moving on to Public Health and Safety Chair, Board Member IO, any report? Use your microphone. Oh. Microphone. Microphone, can you use your microphone? Thank you.
Uh, the only thing to report is that Education and Public Safety, we're meeting together. So I've agendized a meeting for us when we have our next monthly meeting. We're gonna meet again. But in our meeting for public safety, the public safety issues are already been hashed out last night at the Town Hall Meeting. So what's gonna be agendized is how do we all put it together in preventing the crime that was mentioned all last night in prevention of crime? That's our public safety agendized meeting coming up on, I forget what date we have, but uh, Malian knows the date.
Our next meeting for Public Health and Safety and Education Committee will be on September twenty fourth, six thirty to seven thirty, and then seven thirty to eight thirty, Kalaniana Ole Beach Park.
Okay, very good. All right, well, that wraps up our committee reports. Um, and next up is our announcement. Uh, next regular board meeting is Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, at seven PM at Nana Kuli Public Library and then also via WebEx. Um, this is uh concluding our board meeting for this evening. I want to thank everybody who came in person, um, also those online. We wanted to thank you. Oh, go ahead. Yes, please. Go ahead. Uh, state your name for the minutes.
Um, aloha, my name is Kiara Kleva and I'm sixteen and I'm a junior in Nana Kuli High and Intermediate. And a concern I had um is about the transportation that the school provides the kids. Cuz last year we wasn't able to, I guess, afford or had any bus drivers. So there was no bus driving to pick up the kids. And that's also like this year and but last year they gave us bus IDs behind our um students, which allows us to use the city buses to come to school. But this year, they're, they are like not really enforcing the bus IDs and there's still no buses to like give us transportation. Cuz I had a friend tell me that he signed up at the beginning of the of the school year for a ID pass for the bus. And he said it took around like fifteen business days for it to come in, which is crazy. Yeah. And not much kids have any, you know, vehicles at home. And parents, you know, they're already struggling. And one fifty a day is like, it adds up. So, yeah. So I was hoping that um, if, sorry, if it's able to push the um, the school to have bus IDs regularly, like last year. So that cuz um, a lot of students are also, they also use that for, I guess, personal reasons. Cuz a lot of students are starting to work too, and they still can't get transportation there. So I guess they use that as a resource that gets them there. And yeah, it would be really helpful, bring it up like how they had last year.
Okay, very good. We'll connect you with the Chair of our Education Committee and then you folks can have further discussion on that. Thank you so much. Thank you. Go ahead.
Aloha, am I able to make a comment or?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, okay, some of the issues I want to talk about in Nana Kuli High and Intermediate School is the the fountains in E-Building because we don't have any working fountains in E-Building ever since school started. Kids were getting electrocuted by the water fountain because of the hanging wires from the water fountain right next to the water. So we have no working water inside of E-Building and we have no time or transportation to get to um drinking water using the bathroom on our own time because we have no recess. We have literally no time. And then they're they're also wasting our time by having to write our name and time. And when we're going out to use the bathroom, like people have to pee, causes a lot of drama. Another thing I want to talk about is, um, we only have one jug, one jug, and they don't even fill it up. They don't refill it. It and it gets empty in like about an hour or two. And not a lot of students are able to afford flasks and stuff. And some of the teachers, they try to help, but they can't help. And another thing I wanted to talk about is the bathrooms in, oh, actually, I'm not done. The fountains, the fountains, um, I don't know when the last time they've been checked, but we need to get on that because the water is nasty. It don't taste good and it's not as cold and people are getting electrocuted. But I want to know when the last time they got checked. And also another thing is, C-Building bathrooms, um, they have trash bags all over the toilets and it's kind of ridiculous and peel-out. And they even have it in E-Building and it wastes a lot of students' time because we don't have our own time to go use the bathroom and the and drink water. So a lot of people are just standing outside of the restroom waiting to go use the bathroom or waiting to um sign in because you have to go in one by one. And that also caused drama and caused students to abuse. I'm not abused, but I guess assault the security. Um, yeah, I think it's peel-out and we need to fix that. Another thing I want to address is um, my Kumu over here. She has a leaking classroom ever since COVID started and they never fixed it. The people on the roof are slacking, the people at her school are slacking. They need to get on, they need to get on their job and start doing it correctly because it hasn't been fixed. And when they tried to fix it, it was still leaking and it's causing a bunch of mold and it's gonna cost a lot of money and a lot of time for nothing when they could have done it a long time ago and did it correctly a long time ago, but they didn't do it. But yeah, I want to adjust that because my Kumu deserves a good working, beautiful room instead of that moldy nastiness. And I think the kids deserve it too. And another thing I want to talk about is, why waste money on five VPs when we should be wasting, not wasting, but using our money in useful ways like for the fountains, the bathrooms, instead of just wasting on the principal and the VPs, like it doesn't make sense. Use the money wisely, stop using it incorrectly. Mahalo.
Amen to that, sister. Wow, well, it sounds like you're gonna be keeping Chair Agustin very busy in her Education Committee. And I don't know, maybe we have to take a tour up to the school with the committee.
So noted. Thank you for sharing all of that. Out, these concerns can be brought up at any time at the Parent, Teacher, Student Association. So the PTSA, and they meet every last Thursday at Nana Kuli High and Intermediate School Library. And uh, also our Education Committee meetings are every last Tuesday of each month at Kalaniana Ole Beach Park. But if I can get a letter from you to then submit to our Complex Area Superintendent for uh a follow-up so that we can get maintenance on that as soon as possible. Thank you very much. And I'm, I attended Nana Kuli High and Intermediate School and and I feel that none of our students should be dealing with the loss or inability to use a bathroom in their own building and having to cut class time in order to go to another building. That's unacceptable. So thank you for voicing your So thank you for voicing your concern. Yes, yes. Anything in writing is better because then we can relay that to the official directly from you folks. Thank you so much.
Yeah, but then also, we are here to help you. So however we can partner with you to get this effectively taken care of so that we can get results, we're going to work with you to do that, okay? All right, go ahead.
Thank you, board. Please go directly to Board of Education.
Okay, very good. All right, go ahead. Board Member IO?
I sympathize with you because I'm up at the high school when we practice. And the girls from my team, enough on the school team now. I coach a volleyball club team. So I advise all my girls to bring their own flask. And I know you can bring yours. But the water fountain is broken. The water that's in the bathroom is not potable or not drinkable. I don't believe I would drink out of the water fountain in the girls' or boys' bathroom. And the bathroom in the boys' bathroom, I mean the toilets, some of them are broken, so I can imagine a girls' bathroom too then. So again, we'll take it up with Department of Education, which is basically starting with the school. So I'll look into it tomorrow. It's one of the things. Thank you, Chair.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much. Already, very good, board. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you for your time. And please join us at our next Neighborhood Board Meeting, Tuesday, October 15th, here at Nanakuli Library, virtually online at 7:00 PM. Aloha and mahalo.